Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If we could call the roll, please.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenek.
Here.
Alderman Collier and Zelinski have been excused.
Did you have something?
Mayor, I think we should take a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in Florida and the people that lost their lives, so just a moment of silence.
We do have a guest here this evening. Chief Greg Peterson is here from the Towne of Grand Chute, I believe, correct? To present a award. So if there's no objections, because I think the public hearing is going to last quite a while, if there's no objections, I'd like to ask Greg to come forward and present the award to Chief Steika.
I've been to a few public hearings in my day, so I appreciate the opportunity to skip one, yes. No offense to anybody who's got an issue here on the agenda. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. As the mayor said, I'm Greg Peterson, Chief of Police in Grand Chute, but I'm also the President of the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group. And it's truly a pleasure to be here tonight to recognize Chief Steike and the Manassas Police Department for their achievements in the accreditation process. The Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, or Y League as we're known for short, has been accrediting police agencies in the state of Wisconsin for 20 years with the goal of improving police professionalism throughout the state. The process is purely voluntary. It begins with a rigorous self-assessment process where the agency has to examine all of their policies and practices and procedures and compare them against 242 professional standards that we've adopted in our body of standards. It's a process that often takes anywhere from one to three years, depending upon how much time the agency can commit to the process. That reviews, followed by an onsite assessment process where a team of independent assessors come into the agency, they spend three days there, and they go through a rather rigorous process of evaluating all of those activities that the department's been engaged in. They review policies and procedures, they make observations of functional compliance, they do structured interviews with a variety of staff, and they get public feedback as well on the effectiveness of the agency at delivering services. The findings of that team are then submitted to the Wiley Governing Board, a board comprised of 16 law enforcement and other professional people who comprise that board, and then that board will render the final decision with respect to the accreditation process and the particular agency. It's a very challenging process. Not every agency is interested in going through it because of the commitment involved in that process. While we have 73 agencies that are members of Wiley in Wisconsin, to date only 34 have achieved accredited status. And tonight, the Manassas Police Department joins that select group. Not only did they demonstrate compliance with the professional standards that they're required to meet, but they did so in an impressive manner. Our onsite team, while they were present for those three days, were very impressed with what they saw. They made very many favorable observations during their time here. They discovered that support for the accreditation process was present throughout the entire organization, which is sometimes unusual, because often the work is done by one or two people in the organization, and not everybody else appreciates the value or what they're going through. Everywhere they turned, they saw examples of performance that reflected compliance with our professional standards. They became aware of numerous community outreach and interaction efforts that were undertaken by the department, and every interview that they conducted with a member of the department reinforced the professionalism that we found permeated the entire organization. They also received extensive and excellent feedback from law enforcement colleagues and from members of the community. I know one member of the community in the report that we read referred to the organization as a "well-oiled machine." Other citizens that met with the assessors used words like "progressive" and "creative," "professional," "honest and transparent" to describe the organization. And many spoke specifically of the leadership of Chief Steika. And the Governing Board of Wiley has come to know that success in an organization like that experienced in Manassas only comes with strong leadership. So it certainly speaks to the chief's leadership in his organization. So my capacity, or in my capacity as the President of the Governing Board, I was limited during the onsite process to render any type of opinion or contact the assessors. But now that that has passed, I can echo those sentiments, because as a neighbor, as a partner agency, or neighboring agency, I can attest to the quality of work that the Manassas Police Department has done and to the leadership that Chief Steika provides. So at the end of the day, when it came time for us to render a decision about the agency, there really wasn't much of a decision to make. The Governing Board unanimously voted to accredit the Manassas Police Department for a three-year period. I don't recall the effective date exactly, but I know it's, I think it was in December, if I'm not mistaken, Tim. So on behalf of the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, it's truly my pleasure to present Chief Steika and the men and women of the Manassas Police Department with their accreditation award.
I think this is a great honor for Chief Steika and everyone in our department and the PD. I know that they've worked very hard on this, and it's a confirmation of that professionalism that I think we all enjoy in the police department and all have come to trust our officers and our chief to be doing the things that are right, even when people aren't looking, and that's the sign of a great police department. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Greg. Okay, now we'll move back up to the top of the agenda again. And we do have a public hearing this evening for the City of Manassas draft downtown vision plan. And I'm not sure, I had meant to ask if Andrew or Sam was going to kind of kick this off. If you could just give a couple-minute or short description of what the plan was all about, and then we'll take comments from the public after that. And if you need to use the mic, otherwise you won't be on tape for people to watch it later.
Video or audio or?
Both.
Both.
Oh, boy. So you can go home and watch this later on.
I can go home and watch this tonight?
Not tonight.
Oh, tomorrow.
Couple days from now.
All right.
Actually, you're on live.
So without further ado, so my name is Andrew Dane. I'm a planner, community development specialist with SEH, or an engineering/architecture planning firm, with an office up in Appleton. I know we've done a few little projects down here over the years. One of my colleagues, Trevor Frank, has done work with the city before. We had the pleasure of teaming up with Place Dynamics out of Milwaukee. They're a market economic development and planning firm that we've worked with on a number of projects. So Mike Stumpf was the other gentleman up here working on this plan, and then we were a sub to Place Dynamics. So my role in this project was helping facilitate some of the public involvement discussions and working with Mike and Sam and David previously on coming up with some of the strategies in this plan. Just a little bit of background on this, I believe it was David Buck who came here a couple of years ago, roughly, and was, I think this was one of the initiatives that he had sort of taken on with direction from the council and Plan Commission presumably to kind of come up with a game plan for how to move forward on the revitalization of the downtown district. So you have a pretty big downtown, and I think the goal of this plan, the overall goal, was to try to come up with a big-picture vision of what could be in the downtown area, and specifically looking at larger land use issues. So we were hired to, been working over the past six or seven months to put this plan together. We did some, a couple of public meetings, workshops. We had a series of stakeholder interviews with property owners, business owners, some developers, some folks in the real estate community. We did a market study, looking at some updates to kind of what was the market for retail, restaurant, dining, residential development. We did a market study as part of this. We looked at some of your existing plans and policies for downtowns, and then we worked with staff to put together this plan over the last several months. So that's kind of a little bit of background, I guess. I guess I'll just say one other thing, because not everybody here's a planner. You know, this is a vision plan. It's what I call kind of a sub-area plan or a district plan. It's still a fairly high-level policy plan that addresses a geographic area within your community. In a couple of years, at some point in the next couple of years, I believe you're also going to be updating your city's overall comprehensive plan. That's kind of your official plan, master plan for the city that includes a lot of the specific policies that address land use and makes recommendations for a 20-year period. So in all likelihood, you know, elements of this plan would likely get incorporated into that comprehensive plan as you move forward, and those ideas would be sort of formalized a little bit through incorporation of your, of the city's comprehensive plan. This plan really, hopefully, will serve more as a work plan, as kind of a five-year work plan for Sam and your staff, to help give them a little direction, because when you're working in that position and you're trying to manage a downtown area like this, you're bombarded with lots of different ideas, and they don't always align, and they're not always heading in the right direction. In fact, usually, they're kind of going at cross purposes. So I kind of see this plan as being kind of a blueprint, a game plan that Sam and some of his staff and the city, other departments, can use. As you're doing annual plans, annual work plans, or strategic planning as a city, you know, this is a good reference document to help identify priorities. So that's a little bit of a background. I could kind of dive, you know, do a little high-level overview if you'd like to on this, or we can open it up for questions.
So typically, what we do is we'd ask for comments from the public at this point. If there's specific questions, we can answer those after they have a chance to comment. Then we'll come back to the Common Council, and we'll probably have some other questions at that point as well.
Okay.
So at this point, if there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak, and if you're here representing a business or a property, you could state, use the address for that property if you so desire. We need your name and address if you did want to come up and speak, though. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening?
Hello. My name is Patrick James, and I am the business owner at 10 Taco Street. Just wanted to comment on the plan and to ask the council to please consider parking needs of the businesses currently and future of this future development, because right now, on the west end of downtown, there's not a lot of public parking. And if you take this plan and you start to roll it out in phases, one of the things that appears to be coming up sooner than later may be the redevelopment of Water Street, which takes away the only public parking on the west side of Taco Street. And if you want to have a viable downtown, your businesses need to stay viable. So I'm asking you to please consider the current parking needs as well as the future parking needs as this plan rolls forward. And to point out, there is a current opportunity with a parcel that could help alleviate that. Specifics can be gotten from Sam or Alderman Nichols on what I had pointed out. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anyone else who wishes to make any comments this evening? Okay. Well, that was a lot less than I thought we would have. So we'll move on then to the public comments on any matter of concern on the agenda. If anyone had any comments this evening about other things, we'd like to hear from you at this point. And Tim? Tim, Tom, I forget if, we'll take care of your issue when we get to that point in the Seeing, Alderman Taylor?
Before I left home tonight, I had two calls from individuals, constituents, that couldn't make the meeting because of the weather. So certainly, I think we should have another opportunity here for public input on this, maybe at the next meeting. I think would be a good opportunity, because the schools are closed tomorrow, and people are stressing to stay off, and the officials were stressing to stay off the roads. Thank you.
Moving on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants, we have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I make a motion, I would have to tend to agree with Alderman Taylor, that maybe we put this on a second time, just in case there are a few people from the public that do want to address this, especially downtown business people. So I think that's a good idea. So at this time, Mayor, I'll move that this body receive minutes A through G and communications H through M.
There's a motion in a second? Is there any discussion? That was Alderman Kruger. I'm sorry. Alderman Taylor? Sorry. Here you go.
There's not, there's a communication missing in the packet here from Ms. Albright, and I was wondering why that didn't appear in the communications. We received some email on it last week, but it should have been placed in the communications.
The request was for a alderman to reconsider action, and we did give that to all the aldermen. If they did wish to do that, we did not hear back from anyone that they wished to reconsider that motion.
It should have been entered in the communications. Also on item M, it's a situation here, Mayor, that I've talked to you about, and you keep violating my HIPAA laws that I have to sit here and disclose a health condition that I have. And apparently, you didn't take the training, because that's all part of harassment. And certainly, since June, I've been harassed here at every meeting by an alderman that's missing today. Every single meeting, and nothing's been done. So the training, I don't think is very good. Maybe we should all take it again, a second time.
Alderman Taylor, the council did make a decision that everyone should attend the training. HIPAA is not something that is at issue here. HIPAA is a privacy rule for medical records.
It is.
We have no medical records?
And I've talked to you about my medical condition, and I don't have to disclose that to you. And you're just playing politics, Mayor. That's all you're doing here, is you're playing politics.
Are you seeking something else? This is not a HIPAA issue.
And the form that you gave me, you're violating my HIPAA rights, Mayor. And the form I gave you, that you gave me, is not correct for my condition. Okay?
So are you, this is not a HIPAA issue. HIPAA is the privacy rule, a federal law that gives you rights over your health information and sets rules and limits on who can look at and receive your health information.
And I've talked to a lawyer today about it, and his opinion was different on it.
Mr. Speaker, I have.
What is your point of order?
I have listened to.
Alderman Taylor?
I have listened to.
Alderman Taylor, there's a point of order.
Oh, thank you.
Alderman Sevenek, what is your point of order?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the sake of making this meeting calm, I would prefer that both you and Alderman Taylor not debate this issue, and maybe take it up maybe during the protocol meeting or something like that, or privately, so that we can move forward.
I have done just that with the Mayor, Alderman Sevenek. That's exactly what I've done, and he continues to politicize this. And I have taken the course. And there's other things that weren't disclosed to me ahead of time when I took, when I took the training course.
So the recommendation?
And the existing form does not allow me to answer the questions properly. So I'd be happy to sit down with the Mayor and get this behind us, which I have in the past. But he keeps politicizing this situation.
The recommendation is that the Common Council require this, and my recommendation was that the Common Council make a decision if it has been met or not. And I ask that to be placed on the next Personnel Committee, and if there's no objections, I will place, I will ask the Chair to put that on the next Personnel Committee agenda.
And you were well aware of my medical condition, Mayor, which you tend, which you continue to avoid.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a point of order, and I forgot what it was, and I didn't roll, I didn't rule on it.
My point of order is there's, are we done? And then I won't have, you won't have to rule that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No point of order.
See? Okay. And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda this evening has six items. The Common Council minutes from February 5th, the Board of Public Works recommendations from February 5th, including a change order to Pfeiffer Brothers Construction for the Lupla Lake Project addition of $7,404.27. A payment to Pfeiffer Brothers for the same project of $298,757.74. A payment to Keller, Inc. for the Police Department Evidence Room addition. Payment number three, it's for $110,000 even. The Plan Commission recommendations from the January 9th meeting for the Downtown Vision Plan as an advisory tool of future development. And the Plan Commission recommendations from February 12th for the Certified Survey Map for Midway Road and Oneida Street. Are there any items anyone would wish to have separated this evening? Alderman Sevenek? Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you, Alderman Benner, first. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Alderman Benner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like item four removed, please.
Alderman Sevenek, did you have?
Yes, item five.
Any others? Seeing no, four and five, which is the, so a payment to Keller and the Downtown Vision Plan. Seeing no others, is there a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sevenek?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of the consent agenda items, one, two, three, and six, as stated by yourself.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Kruger? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call six zero.
Item four is the payment to Keller, Inc. Is there a motion or discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number four, payment to Keller Incorporated for Project 65056, a Police Department Evidence Room addition for $110,000, and it's payment three.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Grady. Discussion, Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, could you fill us in where we are with this project at this point?
Certainly. We are just about done.
That's kind of what I figured, but.
Any other questions? Yeah. No, it's just about complete. The only thing that needed to be installed yet are the temporary evidence lockers. Keller is pretty much complete. We should be receiving their final bill, which you'll see on the Board of Public Works agenda for the next meeting. Overall, for the total project cost, there'll be a few minor change orders on that next one, but we will be well under budget of what we had allocated to the whole project.
Does it seem to have reached our goal and our objective for what we could do with that small space?
Oh, it's incredible. I invite out anyone, we've been throwing around the idea of possibly trying to do some sort of open house or do something possibly before a council meeting, just so you folks can see what's in there before the secure area becomes secure, that you won't be able to get back there. So if we're able to work something like that, I will certainly give notice. But the area compared to where people were processing evidence before, that is pretty much operational now, so people are already using that. And then obviously, the storage is much more usable than what we've ever had before.
Good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
It's been a great project. Thank you again for your support.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried, okay. Motion carried on, roll call six zero.
Item five is the Downtown Vision Plan. Do we have a preference this evening? Alderman Sevenek?
Mayor, earlier Alderman Taylor made a recommendation, and I somewhat agree, but before I would make a motion or anything, is there, is there really a large importance to take action on this matter this evening? Because I do feel that there's probably some more people from the public that may want to have something to say on this. And if we already adopt and make this motion, then we kind of like, yeah, thanks for telling us after the fact, you know, what I'm trying to say. If we vote on this tonight, then they come in, it's like, we're not listening to them.
You know, it's definitely a project that we were hoping to get wrapped up before January 1, but it is completely at your discretion. I completely understand. You know, you want to make sure everyone's voice gets heard before adopting it, because once, once it is adopted, it is kind of there, and it's a 10-year plan. I know our consultant, one of our consultants is here, and I don't think he would have a.
It's still a working plan, though, correct? I mean, it's not brick-and-mortar kind of thing, and so with that, then I think.
Before you make that motion, though, Stan, I do not know if the consultants will be able to come back for another meeting, so if there are some questions for the consultants tonight, I think it'd be.
I think Sam's probably as well diverse as the consultant.
But if anyone does have a question, we should maybe ask those questions, then you could make that motion to postpone.
I don't know what those questions might be, Mayor.
I'm not sure if there are some others, though, so.
Oh, sure.
I'm just asking, do you not want to wait until?
Go ahead, anybody.
Anyone might have a question for the consultant. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting, we had two representatives from one of our large paper mills here, and I see they're here again tonight, and I'm wondering if they received this updated message from Michael Stumpf that we received in our package, packet, about eminent domain and the possibility, you know, that we're not going to go looking at taking these people's jobs away or taking this land issue with St. Pat's and with Sunoco.
We did have several comment discussions with the plant manager, as well as some people from St. Pat's. I don't know if you spoke to anyone at Culveris, Sam?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, and I see him here tonight, and I just want to make sure that we dispel of any information that might be incorrect or that they're not properly informed.
And if I may, so I think it was a, it's definitely a very sensitive subject, especially with everything that's going around in the Fox Valley and the paper industry and things like that. And the recommendation that the consultant had placed a memo in the agenda was basically to add a preface to the plan, which very clearly stated the city's position on it, and to make sure that it was, it was known that the city is not looking to make this change or force this change. It is just a vision. I also included a memo before that, and I mentioned within that memo that, you know, it is a possible, at your discretion, to just request that the consultants remove that area and note no changes. It really would give a strong comfort to those employers, those businesses. And I know we have spoke briefly with the consultants beforehand, and they would be open to that discussion again.
Anytime you have meetings like that, we should get a memo, see, and we've met with the concerned officials here from, that spoke at this meeting, and to, so we can have that information that they were taken care of properly. And I see him here tonight. Do you have any questions on this issue? And I don't think there's anybody up here that's going to say, let's take this paper mill and build some whatever on that property. I don't think you can ever see anything like that happen, so the big brother's not going to come and shut down a paper mill. So if you have any questions on that tonight, feel free to ask him. And also. And also, something on this plan, and that's why I would like to wait for another meeting, there's three policy changes on land use. To me, that, that's a pretty important thing when we're making policy changes on land use, that we need to have the public input, the public aware of that, and also the council aware of that, too. I did have a question on, on the new housing. If we're requiring the vehicles to be properly garaged on any type of new development projects as far as housing? Are we looking at a flat surface lot with the housing projects?
I don't think it, these land use principles touched on that. That is definitely a direction that staff-
We're touching on, on large development housing, 20 and, 20 units and above, possibly.
Yep. And specific to the requirement of, of underground or enclosed parking, I don't think this principle touched that. That's certainly something that we could look into in the future.
As, as it stands right now, we would allow flat surface parking for a development-
Yes.
For the residents that are living there. I think if we're going to do our downtown, we should have a high-quality development with, with either underground or, or garaged parking units. Certainly in the downtown area. There's some other questions, but I'm going to let Alderman Sevignac move forward with his motion here. And hopefully, we can let one more, two, another meeting go by and have the opportunity for the complete public to speak. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't turn that off, Sam. We've had a comprehensive plan now in this city for about 10 years. And Andrew mentioned earlier about how the vision plan then ties into the comprehensive plan. And I was just wondering for folks here, if you could just comment briefly about how we go from a vision plan, now we're going to be looking at a comprehensive plan. I would suspect around August or September, we'll start taking a pretty hard look at that, because any amendments would have to be done towards the end of the year. And, and what that process looks like when we look at the vision plan and the comprehensive plan to make any potential changes of that. But then how it also goes into our zoning, because obviously, our industrial facilities are zoned industrial, and you can't just go plunk a multifamily dwelling on an industrial site. There's a process that has to happen. And I was wondering if you could just comment on that briefly?
Yeah, yes, very much so. So basically, within the implementation of this plan is for, for city staff to actually look at adopting this future land use within our comprehensive plan. So the recommendation from the Plan Commission is that this plan actually be more of an advisory plan. So those land use principles aren't, aren't policies, they're not hard and fast, even though the, the numbers are there, but it's, it's more of an advisory plan to, for new development. However, if we were to adopt that as a comprehensive plan, let's say, we would just adopt the future land use map as it's presented here within the, within the comprehensive plan, that still would not, you know, give the flexibility for an industrial, a current industrial site to, to build a residential development. There's still that step there to, to rezone it to the appropriate zoning district, which would be public hearings, bring forward a development, things like that. So really, even if, let's say, the future land use map within a adopted comprehensive plan, let's say, showed residential and it was still industrial, that, that property as industrial can still, still work, operate as an industrial facility, as provided that it is zoned industrial. And it's just another thing that, that we look towards for future. So let's say, an industrial plant, you know, went vacant, and at that point, they were to look to sell to a residential property. At that point, we would have the tool and the guidance to allow that rezoning if this was adopted as a, as a comprehensive land use.
Thank you. And I think it's just important for folks to know that that does not happen just by staff. That has to run the process and make it through the Plan Commission, through committee, and then through, to the council. So there is a process to it, and it just doesn't not happen all on its own. Where something could be imposed on somebody just because, say, city staff decides that's something that they want to see. So I appreciate your, your explanation. Thank you.
I'm going to go around this way, because I know you want to make the motion.
I don't want to make the motion.
Oh, you don't now? Oh, okay. Well, then we'll go to you, Stan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think this is possibly my third vision plan since I was elected to the City Council at age 20. And things are always different. And I'm glad that, looking at this, we're being asked that this be an advisory tool. I mean, I'm, usually, I had a fight with mayors to actually put the wording in like that, because they then would make you accountable for your vote. And I, and I'm not completely in agreement with a lot that's in here. And I'm a preservationist, and there was never any plan to build an eight-story office building downtown and tear down two of our most historic buildings in the downtown. So, and then, too, I've been involved with at least three comprehensive plans now. And I'm surprised we got another one coming up. I thought it was every 10 years or something like that. So I guess I'm showing my age. But also, too, there are things in here. I don't want us to tie our hands to whether something should be 40%, 60% owner occupied, those kind of things. I really struggle with that, because you may actually restrict some kind of development in this community, and I'd hate for that to happen. So I like the plan. I like the pictures probably more than the plan. But I'm glad, again, I will repeat myself, that this is a tool for us to work for in the future. And it'd be great if we can accomplish a lot of these things. And, you know, we need to have vision in our community, because if we don't, we become stagnant. So thank you for your presentation and putting this together for us.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schroeder? I'm, I'm with Alderman Sevignac there. I'm glad that this is an advisory, advisory plan. But I could have sworn when I read through this, it stated in here that the plan is recommending putting this entire plan in the CIP. Did I misread that?
Probably not the CIP. Probably look to adopt portions of it in the comprehensive plan. And I think that's, that's probably, I think that's in the implementation specifically in the comprehensive plan. And, and we would likely just look at, at the land use portion of it, because that's, that was where this, this plan started, was to define where the, the vision is for specifically towards the future land use of Manasha. A lot of the other things, you know, the implementation, the land use principles, those are all kind of added materials from our consultants as professional planners and, and market researchers.
So there's no intent to ask the council to put any of this into the CIP at the moment, correct?
I, I don't think so, no. I, I think there's, it does note some things as far as, you know, the, even the construction of Main Street and looking at that, the construction of Water Street. Those are already objectives that we've, that we've put into the budget, and we will certainly take that approach as we move forward. So it's-
I guess I don't want to give you the wrong impression, though. Part of the plan is to implement it. So we will be coming forward and asking for parts of those things to go into the CIP, but that is the common council's choice if those are the things that they want to put in the CIP or not.
Right. And then it'll be à la carte to put it into the CIP. I just want to make sure that when we approve this, we're not approving it as whole, and the whole thing goes in the CIP, and all of a sudden, we have-
No. You will be, have that opportunity to decide if those are the things you want in the CIP. But I'm sure that Director Schroeder and I will be working to put items, as well as with Ald, with Director Radomski, to put some of those items in the CIP as we move forward, that we can discuss again.
Okay. Just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam, just correct me if I'm wrong. In 2008, we were required to have a comprehensive plan, legally required to have one. We've only had one comprehensive plan. We have it in our, I believe, our policy that we have an opportunity to amend it without cost once a year. If somebody needs to amend it for a project, then they have to pay us like $300 for us to do the process, do the application, bring it to the table and talk about it to amend our comprehensive plan. But we've only had one plan for 10 years. We're legally required to have that plan, and we amend it once a year. So we, we haven't had several. And I'm not even sure everybody truly understands what our comprehensive plan is and what it's for. But surely, so our neighbors, surrounding neighbors and, and us have a solid vision of what we intend to do with our, with our land use. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sam, so this, this document here, potential changes to the draft Downtown Vision Plan. The last, the last number two changes to the land use policies. Is that going to be put into this plan?
So basically, as you, Alderman Taylor and Alderman Sevignac had mentioned, regarding the hard and fast land use principal percentages, staff as well was, was very concerned with, with those percentages, binding us to those numbers, as well as it does become very hard to administer all those percentages. So we had a, a long discussion at Plan Commission regarding that. And that's, that's more or less where the, the advisory tool concept came out of their, the Plan Commission's motion to the council. So I, I think there's, this is more of a, the consultant's way of saying, you know, if, if these areas are a concern, the council, you know, possibly could look at rewording some of those. And that's where they, they provided this, this document as far as, number one, providing the preface and possible changes to the land use policies.
So by approving this advisory Downtown Vision Plan tonight, are these three policy changes in that plan?
No. These would be, these are not currently in the plan.
Okay.
So it would be at your sole discretion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Alderman Sevignac?
Thank you. I want to go back to what Alderman Benner just said. To a little degree, I take some offense to what he just said. I believe every one of my colleagues up here knows what a comprehensive plan is. When I said that I was involved with three vision plans, I was involved in three vision plans for downtown. I've also been involved in four comprehensive plans. Three with the city and one with the county, because I served on the county board. You have to remember, I was elected in 1981, so that's a, a long time ago. So we've always had comprehensive plans before us. In fact, one thing that has to be understood is that they are pretty strong and in stone. And they're not nilly-willy changed, you know? But they have. They have been. I mean, there's a few times where I've used, used the example, well, wait a minute. You want to do this, but here's the comprehensive plan, and it says, this is how this is going to be zoned. You know, so it does come up, and it does happen. So.
Alderman Sevignac, if you wanted to postpone it, we can then?
Because of how it's written. If someone wants to add more, come up and talk, they can.
Okay.
I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. I, I think Sam answered my question when I said, you know, this isn't set. And if, you know, let's say, a developer or even just someone from downtown or even just a resident came and wanted to give their input yet on this, they still can.
We, we could amend it at that point if it's something major. Or we could just note it within the plan. But this is really to give direction. For example, on the Bonta site, when Sam starts marketing that site, this gives Sam direction as to who he should market it to. That's really what this plan is, to help us to help that vision so that we're sure that the common council and staff have the same direction that we're moving forward at.
And I know I've already attended two meetings for this plan itself. It's not like, it just got, so the public knows that that just got dropped here.
Sure.
And in those meetings, in fact, there's even a picture of one of the meetings that was right here at City Hall. And we had a number of people show up for it, so.
Sure. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your example, Mayor. And let's say, for instance, how you just said about the Bonta property that, Donley property at Sandberg Market. So what is his direction? Just run us through kind of a scenario with that property.
Well, I, I'm guessing, I shouldn't speak for Mr. Schroeder, but we've had discussions that there will likely be RFPs for that property. And when we start putting out that RFP, that we would make sure that we contact developers who had experience in the types of development that this plan shows would go on that site. So it, it shows residential, I believe. So we probably wouldn't be reaching out to developers that do exclusive commercial development then in that case.
And on this property, I think we were already through the, a residential use for this property, which I think the council or the RDE turned down?
They did at that point, and that was based upon some of those principles that you were just talking. They don't want to met some of those principles, mainly a subsidized-type housing.
Because, you know, certainly, if we're going to have a quality development, and the word is quality, Manasha has 40% rentals. And, and I think because of the, the, the quality of that project wasn't up to what we thought it should be. And that's why I think the council turned it down. So certainly, you know, instead of a quantity, I think we're looking for quality here and verify when it comes to more owner-occupied units and rather than just rental units. And again, with the full underground parking, garages. So we've already been through that, where we brought not so quality of a project to this body, and we turned it down, especially for that site. So I think for transparency and because of the weather tonight, I would just like to make a motion to postpone this for two weeks till the next meeting.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a motion? No? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move that we, upon the recommendation of the Plan Commission, approve the Downtown Vision Plan as an advisory tool for future development and also include in that plan the memorandum of potential changes to the draft plan to demonstrate our efforts of, of good faith with our community members.
There's a motion in a second. I need to better understand what the memorandum of, so is it Sam's memo or is it the consultant's memo? Alderman Nichols?
The changes rec, provided by the consultant that include addressing the concerns about eminent domain or forcing businesses to leave the downtown and the changes to the land use policies.
Okay. And did you want to also include Sam's about the, the Sanoco site? Where is it here? That it's not anticipated in some areas of the downtown due to private ownership. Common Council could make a recommendation to the consultants in good faith to the public to remove specific areas within the future land use map to show no expected changes in the Sanoco, Culverus, and St. Patrick's area.
Yes, we can include that as well.
That's part of that as well? Okay. Okay. So there's a motion, and Alderman Benner, are you still okay with that second then, based upon understanding of what that memo was?
Yeah, well, the only concern that I have with the eminent domain part, and Sam, I'm not sure if you're aware of this, but there's legislation going to the table tomorrow in Madison about eminent domain. Do you know much about what that is?
I believe that eminent domain is specific to bikes and trails still, and I think the memorandum of understanding that the consultants had put together was more or less a preface to state that the city is not looking to use this plan to go out and use eminent domain to acquire any such properties. It's more or less as a, again, an advisory tool, and that it just, and good faith allows certain properties to know that the city is not going out and looking for these changes. We're more or less taking these changes as they come.
Andrew, are you aware of what that eminent domain?
Yeah, then that was, I mean, it's kind of, yeah, I mean, in some ways, it is kind of relevant to the discussions. Yeah, I think the legislation is actually to restore the use of eminent domain to purchase properties or easements for sidewalks and bicycle facilities, bicycle accommodations.
And that's what I thought it was, was to give municipalities more?
Well, it's to give them back the power they had up until the last budget. So if you have like a trail, the big issue it's causing on projects is that you've got 95% of a trail complete, and you've just got one landowner that doesn't want to give up a little 10-foot patch, you're kind of out of water. So that's mostly focused on, I think, bike trails and sidewalks.
Okay, yeah, I was just concerned that we could, if there was legislation that was changing, that we could get pressured from a developer or something to do more than what we had a comfort level to do, and I had concerns with that. But I knew the legislation was going there tomorrow, but I wasn't completely familiar with all the dynamics of that, so. Yeah, I'm okay with that, that motion. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I'd like the motion explained. I think there's an attachment here that we have the plan, it stands on its own, right?
So the way I understand the motion, and help me out if I'm wrong, Mr. Schrader, that this memo would be included as a preface to the entire plan, more or less, correct?
My understanding was that they would, they would put a preface together to insert into the plan, and then the land use policies that you had brought up on page 17 would actually be modified as presented in their, as presented in their memo. And then the last, the last portion regarding my memo regarding the good faith would be towards the future land use map, would actually be to remove the Sunoco and Culvera sites and show those as no change, because it is highly unlikely that, within the lifetime of this plan, let's say 10 years, that those are going to happen. But that would, at least in good faith, show those property owners and employees that the city is not going out and doing that.
So this whole document is going to be inserted in this document? Is that what this motion is?
I guess we could do it that way. That was not how.
Oh, is that what the motion is, Mayor? That's what I'm asking.
The motion is to amend the document to incorporate those items, then? That's, and the consultant is shaking, he said yes, so?
Yeah, I think we can take, I think we could, I think we, as Sam articulated, we could take the substance of changes that are in the place dynamics memo and update the plan to reflect those changes.
Why did this show up in our packet? Why do these policy changes come forward like that, if it's not in the plan?
I think those were, part of that was coming out of the fact that once the plan went to Plan Commission and it was out there, and then there was some concern that was brought up by some of your business owners or industrial properties and others, and so that memo was...
Did this go through Planning Commission?
Those were some of the concerns that the Plan Commission talked about.
Did this memo go through Planning Commission?
It did not.
It did not?
Those were the items that we spoke about in the Plan Commission.
Now we have, after the fact of the Planning Commission, now we have some, three policy changes here, which are certainly, I'm not comfortable with that the Planning Commission can see these.
Director Schrader, did you want to comment on?
I think the...
I'm sorry, Plan Commission's thoughts?
Thank you, Chair. I think they were put together because of the discussion at Plan Commission. There were some major concerns, however, it wasn't, it wasn't something that the Plan Commission felt comfortable rewriting that at the meeting or pushing off any further. So that's where the consultant did put these together as the option for the council.
Why would we have a consultant writing policy for us instead of the Planning Commission recommending it to us and to the body?
And these are, these are very, basically, it's just softening the existing policies that are already in there. It's not, it's not adding them. It's, you know, instead of saying at least 50%, it's...
Softening isn't a good, good thing for the downtown project, you know, adding, adding more and more rentals to our community in the downtown that aren't owner-occupied. And I'm surprised that an outside firm wants to write policy for us instead of the Planning Commission. I would like this to go back to the Planning Commission if they haven't seen this, and they certainly do a great job with this, and I'm not comfortable with this document being put in here without the oversight of the Planning Commission.
So did you want to send that back to the Plan Commission, Alderman Taylor?
Yes, I would.
Pardon? So you make a motion to recommend this goes back to Plan Commission?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that this document from Michael Stump, Place Dynamics, appear on the Planning Commission agenda for discussion and to recommend their findings to the council.
Okay, I'm a little confused because either you would want to send the whole thing back to the Plan Commission, including that memo, and not take action on the plan tonight, but what you just said sounded...
The plan is fine with me, but this is another document coming, and we can add this to this at another time, but this document needs to go back with the policy changes to the Planning Commission.
You have, I guess we have a motion to approve the entire document, so if you want to...
Can I make an amendment to that, that this document go back to the Plan Commission?
But then you're basically saying that we can't approve the document. So you'd send the entire thing back to the Plan Commission?
Alderman Nichols made a motion to include this into this document.
Exactly, and that's what we're doing. So you can't still, you could send the whole thing back and have the whole thing come back, but you can't send just a part of it back and approve the rest?
Except for from the document, Mayor, and the Planning Commission didn't get a chance to look at it yet.
Okay, so I will, is there a second to send just that portion back?
I think you either send it all or you don't.
So the motion to send just that document back dies due to lack of a second?
You want to make a motion to include that? I can right now.
I'll make a motion to send the whole document back to the Planning Commission for this discussion, a clarification on this.
Including the amendment?
Including, yeah.
There's a motion in a second to refer to the Plan Commission, both the plan and the associated documents that came in the packet this evening?
Till the next meeting and to refer back to the Council.
Then it would come back again, yes. So there's a motion in a second. Any discussion on just the referring? Kevin, did you want to talk about referring it to?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The thought that I had is that I seconded the motion that was made by Alderman Nichols, where she actually amended the recommended motion that's on the agenda. And I thought about removing my second so that the motion would stand on its own, and then this would be an amendment to the motion, and then see, see how the amendment stands with the motion, and if the amendment doesn't go, then, then we would have the original vision plan. Do you agree with that, Alderman Nichols?
Fortunately, we've accepted a motion at this point, and we've already discussed...
We did, yeah, and I understand that, and it kind of, things kind of ran away a little bit on us because we had a motion on the floor that we weren't acting on, that was not acted on, and then we added another motion. And I turned my, because we had a motion on the floor to approve the vision plan as the motion was made by Alderman Nichols with the addition of basically this document, and I seconded that motion. And then we went on, we never acted on that. We ended up with another motion to send the whole plan back, and so I'm kind of confused. And I thought it would clean it up if I just, if Alderman Nichols just made an amendment to the original motion to include this document. So have a motion, but amend it, have an amendment for this.
Okay, so the original motion was to approve the document with the amendment?
Was to approve the document with this, right. And we never acted on that. And now we have, and now we have a motion to send it back to Plan Commission, so we have two motions on the floor.
Referring to a committee would override the original motion.
I didn't know that.
Yes, just like tabling or postponing or something like that.
Okay.
So, so right now, we would, we'd have to act on referring it back to Plan Commission, and then we could amend it again if that does not happen.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Great. Does anyone else have comments on referring to Plan Commission? I don't know why your light's on. Let's see if it works. There we go. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I recall a robust public hearing and discussion about the downtown vision plan at the Plan Commission meeting on January 9th, and what's before us this evening is a result of those comments and the community taking the time to review the plan, which we should really appreciate and take into consideration their concerns and demonstrate our good faith in working with them. I don't see a need to refer it back. I think the work has been done. The plan came from the community and was put together by the folks who listened to the community. So I'm, I really believe everything we need is right here before us this evening to make a decision.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This didn't come from the Planning Commission or the community. This came from a private company here, and all I'm seeing is they want to make sure that our checks and balances are in order and that the Planning Commission gets to view a document like this that has such great impact. Thank you.
Okay, seeing, whoops. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Schrader, we don't, we don't, Plan Commission doesn't meet again until March 6th, is that correct? So we won't see this then until March?
19th.
19th?
Or 18th.
18th. How does that impact our, our plan at this point?
At this stage, it would just basically put, push any implementation that's called out within the plan back a full month. You know, some things, some things that are already in the work that were included in the plan to strengthen the language of it, obviously are still moving forward, but other than that, staff would not start to work to implement this until, until that time.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Taylor?
Do you have any projects that this is going to haul up for a month that we don't know about?
The only one that, that comes to mind again is the, excuse me, the Bonta RR Donley site. If that were to get acquired, I would, I would direct the redevelopment authority to hold off any future of that property until this, this document would be approved.
These are the ones that turned down the substandard housing in the past.
Seeing no further discussion, the motion that's on the table right now is to refer to the Plan Commission. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on, roll call 4-2.
Okay, so we will move forward at this at the next Plan Commission meeting then, and we'll have the consultant, well, no, we won't until after the Plan Commission acts. We won't modify it then. Thank you for coming tonight, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you.
And item I is action items. Oops. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 2018 through 215, 2018, in the amount of $5,47,856.67.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Grati. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please? Did you have discussion, Kevin, or are you? Oh, you just bumped it? Okay.
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Do we have a motion for those recommended for approval? Alderman Kruger? Oops, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve the beverage operator license applications for the 2017 through 19 licensing period per the six names on the memo dated February 15th, 2018.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second by Alderman Benner. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call 6-0.
There is one application that was recommended for denial, and Mr. Thiel is here this evening. If you would like to step up and tell us a little bit about your application, then we'll possibly have some questions and discussion after that.
Okay. It was probably denied because of a drug conviction that I had over 13 years ago and some domestic violence problems that I had. First of all, my drug conviction came right before my first son was born, and ever since then, I've been clean. And then, you know, I just, thank you, sorry.
You can grab the microphone and pull it up a little bit too, if that would help.
And then, you know, since then, I had three children. I was a Cub Scout leader and, you know, been a family man. Then had problems with my marriage and may have done some things that I regret, obviously. And, you know, I've learned from my mistakes. Those were three years ago, and I went to domestic violence treatment, and past that, I have to speak with my ex on a daily basis because we have young children and never have had any problems with that. The only person I hurt in that situation was myself. No physical violence towards anybody.
Well, thank you, Mr. Thiel. Is there anyone who has any questions for Mr. Thiel before we move forward, and then we'll accept a motion? Attorney Captain? I don't know if, there we go.
I notice on the alcohol operators license application, the criminal damage to property and the disorderly conduct, do they arise? and the disorderly conduct, do they arise out of the same, do they occur on the same date?
No. It was a week later.
Okay, so they were two separate?
Right.
That's, that's why I was asking, because I see it, they both said, um, twelve eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, they were two separate incidents.
And what was the criminal damage to property? Can you describe what happened?
Yeah, um, well, I, um, I found, um, my wife's car parked in, um, the parking area of where, um, the man she was having an affair with. And I knocked on the door, and, um, there was some glass in the door, and I broke the glass.
Okay.
And then the second one was a week later. The man called her phone, and she was sleeping, and I noticed that it was the same man. And, um, he said some things to me that, that any husband wouldn't wanna hear, so I broke, I threw her phone on the floor and it broke.
And, um, those offenses, they occurred while you were married?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
And, um, now you are divorced, correct?
That's correct.
And since when was that?
Uh, two years this March.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does anyone wish to make a motion at this time? Alderman Sevigny?
I have some questions.
Sure.
Um, probably for either the chief or the city attorney. Looking at these in the past, we were either told that they were either misdemeanors or felonies, and I'm assuming that these were misdemeanors?
The domestic abuse charges were misdemeanors. The felony conviction was from the drug-related one, which was, uh, a longer period back.
That was back in nineteen ninety-three, and it says drug possession of THC.
Two thousand and three, I believe, was...
I have nineteen ninety-three on my papers.
There's two of them on there, ninety-three and two thousand and four.
And then two thousand and four, yeah. I'll ask the question.
Alderman Nichols?
A question for Attorney Captain. The felony conviction dates back to two thousand and three. Could you tell us, um, how the law treats that?
With regard to a felony conviction, if there's one statute that indicates that a felony conviction, unless it's been pardoned, does not qualify someone to have a bartender's license. However, there is another statute that indicates, um, more or less when someone has been convicted of a felony, if that person, um, has served their time or did, took whatever punishment was assessed to them, and there have not been any other convictions after that for a period of time, that it should not be taken into consideration, um, after a certain period of time. That is a, a long period of time, obviously. The question would be whether or not the, um, council would consider the convictions from two thousand and fourteen to demonstrate that, um, a person, because there's multiple convictions over a period of years, granted, there was some space in between there, i- is that enough to demonstrate that the person is a habitual offender? And that would disqualify a, a person from, uh, receiving an alcohol license. Something else that comes into play is whether or not, um, the convictions, uh, are substantially related to, um, the license for which the person is applying. And that would be something that the council should be considering as well.
And how would the offenses that are outlined in two thousand and fourteen relate to our habitual offender guidelines that we have?
We have, um, I mean, habitual offender is a statutory, so, um, I can tell you what case law indicates. And what case law indicates is that if there is a demonstration that a person is unable to conform their behaviors to what's expected under the law, and the person continues to have convictions, no matter what kind of convictions they are, that can be considered, um, when you're looking at whether or not to approve a license. So it, it, what I'm saying is it's not a hard and, and fast rule, which is why you need to look at each case on an individual basis. We have, um, guidelines, and that's exactly what they are. They are guidelines. It's not, um, you know, you do this. No. You have to look at each particular case and then, um, put it together and decide whether or not it's appropriate for the, um, person to receive a license. And of course, with the operator's license, we, um, expect that the person is going to, um, check IDs and ensure that there aren't, um, fights going on in an establishment in which they're working, that if something, uh, occurs, that the person will contact law enforcement to let them know, will cooperate with law enforcement, you know, those kinds of things. That's what the expectation is when you have an operator's license. So in looking at all of the convictions together, does it tell you that the person is able to do those things or not? That's the question you have to, to answer for yourself. And I believe that when the, um, Lieutenant Mothe put the, um, letter together for the applicant, he was looking at guideline two and, um, I think there was one more. Well, with regard to the felony conviction, guideline one. And guideline one, we just talked about as far as, yes, it did occur a long time ago. And certainly, if there were other drug convictions that occurred, that e- even if they were a long time ago, and if you had some that were recent, that certainly would be something to take into consideration.
Thank you.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. This council in the years past have given licenses out to people who had convictions this old, and actually a little bit newer than this. Excuse me. The more recent ones, I mean, quite honestly, uh, it's not a situation I think anybody in this room would wanna be in is being a marriage like that and have to try to second-guess what you would do. And, um, throwing a phone on the floor, breaking a window. I personally don't see that as a reason to not give out a license. So on this particular case, I'm gonna make the motion to approve the license, uh, for Troy Thiel.
Is there a second? There's a second from Alderman Grady? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Do you want me to put it there?
Yeah, we should, just so that there's our record of it. Okay.
Motion carried on, roll call six zero.
So we have approved your license, and I don't know if the chief can help you if you have any questions about the next steps? Or if you know what you're doing after this, then, um...
I guess I'll be able to close the bar now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item J is held over business. The first item is the common council minutes from January fifteenth. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. As the council may recall, I asked that we hold this matter until this time, so at this time, I'll move that, um, we take up common council minutes one fifteen of two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Kruger? Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I, I bring this up is that, um, I wanted to review the tape to make sure that, um, what occurred, what's in the minutes and what occurred were the same thing, and, um, I was correct. Um, I also shared the, the information with another council member, uh, while I played the video so that they would know that I was in the right on this. I'm referring to the area where, um, on January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, uh, it was moved by Alderman Zaliski, second by myself, to increase the security deposit of a hundred and fifty dollars, as we all recalled. Uh, the mayor indicated at that time that we could not do that because that's up to the park board to make those decisions. That was his ruling. He did not say that the motion was out of order because the security deposit was not on the agenda for discussion. That was not what was said. What needs to be added there was that the mayor stated that the security deposit is something that the park board decides on. Afterwards, I indicated that that is not the case, that they advise us of any fees or charges or leases or things like that, and we make the recommendation as the body. The common council agreed with me on that, and, um, we move, I, I, uh, asked the council, I over, I asked that we overrule the mayor's decision on that, and that happened, and we moved forward, and we did end up placing the security deposit of a hundred and fifty dollars. This might seem minor to the rest of this body, but it isn't to me. I'm someone who is, uh, quite adverse to protocol and procedures. Oh, is there a second?
I don't know, well, I don't know what the amendment is at this point yet.
I just indicated it, and she typed it in.
So, okay, so the...
So in any word, anyways, go ahead, Mayor.
There'd be, need to be a second if we know what the amendment is then. So you want to remove...
I would like to remove your, the statement that says, "The mayor stated the motion was out of order because the security deposit was not on the agenda." Had that been the case, I would have moved to suspend the rules to take that particular matter up, which I did not, because that's not what was stated. What was stated was, "We cannot do that as a common council." That decision comes from the park board, and I disagreed with you and the rest of the council.
And that's fine, but I just need to know...
Sustained my motion.
I just need to know what you would like it to say instead.
What I like it to say is, Mayor, Mayor...
Mayor Murkis stated...
Merkis stated that the motion was out of order because it is not up to the council to make that decision, it is for the park board to. The park board advises us on these decisions.
Well then, make, it's not up to the council to make that decision. It is up to the park board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so is there a second for the amendment? I'd rather just, oops. The attorney said that we can either accept this as a correction or a motion. I'd rather just the council votes on it as a...
Correct.
A motion and, and move forward. I'm not sure if that's exactly what was said or not.
I just wanted to reflect.
Something to that effect, so...
And you can review the tapes.
Yeah.
It's, it's on January fifteenth, and it comes up rather quickly.
Sure. So there's a motion to amend that line to state, Mayor Murkis stated, "The motion was out of order because it is not up to the council to make, this decision is up to the park board."
Yeah.
Okay, and that was a sec, and a second by... Okay, so first we take a roll call vote. Are you finished, Sam?
Oops, sorry.
Uh, then we take a roll call vote on just the amendment? And we can just do a voice vote if that's okay with you, Debbie or Dorit?
That's fine, no, whatever you want.
So all those in favor of the amendment?
All right, aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And I guess now we do have to?
Well, I can...
Oh, you can type, okay. So the motion carries five one with Alderman Nichols voting no. And now the motion as amended to accept the, to, not accept, to approve the common council meeting minutes of January fifteenth.
As amended, as amended.
As amended. Is there further discussion, Alderman Sevigny?
Oh, I was just gonna make that as amended.
Oh.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Seeing no further discussion, now we probably have a spot to do a roll call?
Then we'll all say, yep.
Okay.
We can do a roll call as amended.
Okay.
Motion carried on, roll call six zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. Item one is ordinance one eighteen, amending Title VII, Section Six regarding retail food recreational licensing and registration. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve O dash one dash eighteen, an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter Six of the Code of Ordinances related to retail food recreational licensing and registration.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call six zero.
Item two is Resolution Three designating public depositories and authorizing withdrawal of city funds. Is there a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for R three eighteen.
There, there's a motion and a second by Alderman Benner? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call six zero.
Item three is Resolution Five, authorizing execution of the DNR Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for R dash five dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing execution of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Uh, just so folks are aware of what this is, could we have a, um, quick summary?
General Manager Croze is here this evening.
This is the second round of funding for the lead service replacement program. We had applied for this last year, and we had gotten three hundred thousand dollars. So with this, we would have a total of five hundred thousand dollars to spend on our program. Of this, we replaced a hundred lead services already and have spent about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars of the first round of funding.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Becky, I can't turn anyone's light off anymore, so... I noticed, so I just wanted to make sure there was no one else. I noticed, so I just wanted to make sure there was no one else. Seeing no one else, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six-zero.
Item L is appointments. There are three this evening. There are two for the Landmarks Commission that we could take together if anyone wanted to do such, or we can take them separately. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your appointments to the Landmark Commission.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second for the reappointment of Dean Whitevin and Kate Mueller to the Landmarks Commission for the term of March 1, 2018 through '21. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote? We don't need to do that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is a reappointment of Ken Kubiak to the Board of Appeals. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Mayor.
Whoops, I'm sorry. There we go.
Oh, you shut me off. I can't believe you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, go ahead, Kevin. Actually, Kevin really should take this. He knows Ken better.
I've known Ken for over 30 years, and he's also my neighbor, so I kind of wanted to have the honor of doing this one, so I appreciate you yielding to me. I'd like to make the motion for the reappointment of Ken Kubiak to the Board of Appeals for the term of 2-1, 2018 through 2-1, 2021. Thank you.
I'll say that.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Sevigny? Any further discussion? Do you have further discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I just want to say that I appreciate the work that Ken has done, and I remember a young Kevin Benner sitting in the audience with Ken, interested in maybe someday running for Alderman, and I always thought it was going to be Ken, but it was Kevin.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comment on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? So motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.